Okay, I'm going to call our village board meeting for March 7th, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Gary Hurstberg.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Aaron Moran. Chris Zellner.
Here.
Phil Random. Phil Willums.
Here.
Nyla Fry.
Here.
Okay, first thing is confirmation of open meeting compliance.
And I can confirm that the notice of public hearing was mailed to residents on February 11th, 2022. Notice of public hearing was published in the Tribune on February 18th and 25th. And the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on March 4th. And the final agenda was posted in all three locations on March 2nd. And the packets were made available online on March 2nd.
Thank you. Next item we have is consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or I look for a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items one through four.
Motion by Nyla Fry.
Second.
Second by Sam Kaufman. Any other comments? Call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Ayes have it.
And public comment?
You're beating me to it, yes.
Sorry.
Public comment. I was putting my motions on my sheet here, so. We can stall a little bit. Couple, couple minutes we can stall. We're waiting for the man in scrubs. Okay, public comments. Do we have any sheets that people turned in?
We have one. Maria Pratt.
Pat.
Put an R in it.
Pat.
Pat.
Put an R in it. That's why. Now I have it correct. Thank you.
There you go. You're welcome. Maria Pratt, 1,000 Woodsford Drive here in town. I am surrounded by three former students from three different schools. I'll have you know. Chris at Edgewood, Brett at St. Dennis, and Chris at St. John's. So that's kind of an odd thing. That was not my planned talk. Anyway. I'm concerned about the number of alcohol liquor licenses that seem to be going in everywhere. And I think that we can do with a lot fewer of them in town. Next, regarding the Mill House question, I just have a question over here that you can either answer me now if you can or not later would be fine. Is the new boutique hotel going to be run more like an Airbnb with coded entry, check-in, check-out with no one on site in case the toilet overflows? How do those kinds of things get handled if there is no one there? What about housekeeping duties? Who will be handling those and the maintenance of the location? Also that the previous owner requested to be part of a TIF a number of years back to put an elevator into that building. And now a TIF is being requested for a sprinkling system that maybe should have been known about ahead of time that could have solved maybe the loan problem. So those are the things that I raise and I address it to them since I'm sitting right next to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other forms, Carol? Todd?
In addition to the numerous fine staff folks in the back, back row there, we have one new addition to the staff team with us tonight, Jared Hine. If you want to stand up, Jared. Jared's the new deputy administrator, communications manager. Came down for a couple of days. He will be started, he will be with us full-time on April 4th. So, welcome Jared.
Welcome Jared.
Welcome.
Chris?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, pardon me. I wanted you to introduce one other item regarding our committee volunteer application process, which is going to be opening up here shortly.
So we just sent out emails to those that their terms are expiring at the end of April. And they need to submit a application of interest, which is on the village website, by April 10th to be considered.
April 10th. For anybody who didn't hear that, Roberta, I know you're writing it down, so I know you saw, heard it. So, good. And we encourage all to apply, as many people as we can have. You won't, everybody doesn't get selected, of course, but that's a great problem that we have, that we have more people apply than positions, which it's never any fun when we don't have enough people participating, so.
And I can add to, just some context to Carla's comment. The practice is, all members of committees that have their term end are asked to reapply if interested. So essentially, it opens that opportunity up to all members of the community as opposed to simply re-appointing the prior.
Thank you. Good, Todd? Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure. I'm, and I, for selfish reasons right now, I'm just going to say that I, my daughter was married this past Saturday and I'm, I'm here and I'm exhausted from that wedding. But it's all good. Everything went really well. So, happy for them and that's my shout out to my daughter. So, all right. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay. Next we have under presentations, proclamation celebrating Rachel Gorman earning Girl Scout Gold Award. Is Rachel here? There she is. Can you stand? That would be great. So, we have a proclamation honoring her. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and, and this award?
Well, I've been like painting my whole life, so then my Gold Award project, which is like an 80-hour community service project, I decided to paint a mural at Arboretum Elementary, which is where I went to as an elementary student. In total, I think I was just over 80 hours. I was at like 85. And then it took me 37 hours to paint the mural over the course of four days.
That's tremendous. Thank you for doing that and for the service in the community. Awesome story. So, I'd look for a motion.
For this proclamation.
Well, I'm making a motion. We issue a proclamation in her honor right this minute.
Okay. Motion by Phil Willums. Do we have a second? We have a second by Phil Random. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Ayes have it. So I have a proclamation to read. So, do parents have a camera or anything you want to take a picture? Perfect. Come on over. So proclamation celebrating Rachel Gorman of Wannakee and her earning of Girl Scout Gold Award. Whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest award a Girl Scout can achieve and proves its holder has completed a project that has a measurable and sustainable impact on her community. And whereas a Gold Awarded Girl Scout tackles an issue that is dear to her by assessing a need, designing a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. And whereas the Gold Award is the mark of a truly remarkable proof that only, that not only can girls make a difference, but they are, they already have. And whereas the Girl Scout Award, Gold Award serves as a key to open doors to scholarships, preferred admission tracks for college, and amazing career opportunities. Whereas Rachel Gorman, a member of Girl Scout Troop 2648, has completed the Girl Scout Gold Award, food is fuel for life. Rachel describes her project as, "I created a mural depicting kids being active. My message behind this piece is that kids can't be active like what is shown in the mural without a proper diet. I then encouraged people to donate to the food pantry through Facebook and Instagram posts, as well as my local newspaper. Now therefore, I, Chris Zellner, village president of Wannakee, Wisconsin, do hereby applaud Rachel Gorman for her efforts and achievement. And I declare March 7th, 2022 as Gold Award Girl Scout Award, Rachel Gorman Day in Wannakee." Congratulations. Hello, I signed it for you. Oh, you got it wrong. That's not the right one. This is the right one. Oh, you don't want that copied one. There you go. Congratulations. Mom get all the pictures?
I think you, I think it might be for you to use if you want to.
Okay. Moving on to licenses and permits. Discuss, I'm sorry, public hearing. Public hearing and discussion action on request for Beach Heritage Hills LLC for consideration of general development plan, specific implementation plan, and final plat for the second and third additions to the Heritage Hills development. Tim?
Thank you, Chair Zellner. The information can be found on pages 24 through 48 of the packet if you're following along. The applicant is requesting approval of a GDP, an amendment to the GDP for Heritage Hills, along with an SIP, as well as approval of two plats, the second and third addition to Heritage Hills. The amendment to the general development plan will alter the lot types in the northwest corner of this development, resulting in an addition of three single-family units to the overall neighborhood. The street layout will remain and everything else is in conformance with the original GDP and the plats as previously approved. The Plan Commission recommended conditional approval of the request at its February 14th meeting. And staff is recommending conditional approval as well. I know representatives of the applicant, on behalf of the applicant are here this evening as well.
Okay. Would you guys like to present if you have anything first or? Go ahead, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be here. Good to see everybody's faces again. And I'll just give you a kind of a quick update. Where are we through the process here? From the development of Heritage Hills, which we started about two years ago. And we broke ground and went through our first two phases up until this point. And now we're, we're looking at doing another decent-sized phase this coming summer. The reason for the movement of lot lines in the northwest section was just the proximity to what will be Division Street. And when we bring, you'll see Division Street, how it bends in and is adjacent to some of those home sites. We realized that the, the home sites themselves were a little too big for what the market would allow for, for a, you know, higher-end house to be built there. So we, we shrunk down the lots a little bit there, just to bring the style and price point of those houses more in line with what the market would dictate. This northwest phase that we'll be bringing on this summer will be the, we call it the second time move-up houses, so higher-end houses. We're very excited to get more of a, more of a custom feel and offering a wider variety and a wider palette of siding, which was brought up at Plan Commission. And to that point, I'm also happy to say we immediately went back and flipped three spec houses that are being built from gray to red. And I forget what the other color was, a light blue. But I brought up an interesting dialogue internally of Veridian. It forces us to do an overall research project of all our neighborhoods and what's going on and just how popular gray is. And gray is very popular. That's the reality of it right now. People who are coming in and signing up to build a house with us are selecting any and all different varieties of gray. They're painting their interior walls gray. They're picking gray countertops. It's just a lot of grays right now. Now, so that being said, we are going to continue to control what we can control and that's diversifying up the future houses and the color palettes as we get up the hill. We'll also be introducing more of our, our white siding with black windows. There's a tremendous lead time on windows right now in the housing industry. 15 weeks just for white windows that typically go around a standard house. 18 weeks on black windows. So we really have to plan well in advance to build a, a white-sided house with black windows, which is a popular design as well. So, we'll be making all our efforts and forwarding those on, on this summer on focusing on that as we go up the hill. Further down the hill, we also took a closer look. We'll be bringing on this phase right here. I'll point to it. Right in there, this summer. We are going to change up the color palette of the twins as we get going. Further up the hill as well, just to offer some more diversification for the entry-level product. We're very excited to start the initial design of our park that will be going in along the main access road there. We're excited to work with Susan on that and present to her what we're initially conceptualizing as a park that will be used by both active adults with a sitting area, potential fire pit, an area up above for them to look down upon an area for the kids to play with some sort of play structure. So it's really going to be a, kind of a first of its kind of park for, for both age demographics in the same area. So we're excited to work with parks on that. We'll be bringing on more of our entry-level twin product, as well as our Haven product, which is more geared towards 50 and up. To date, we've got, I believe, 65 homes sold. And continuing at a, at a good pace out there, at a decent pace. We're definitely noticing some trends in the, in the price-conscious market that's out there. And we're, we're seeing a higher absorption rate for houses that are priced about 4, 425 and less seem to sell pretty quickly. Houses over that tend to take longer to sell, which is to be expected in a market like this. So, as far as the summer goes, the, the building industry is always difficult just with lead time for product and material, labor, and now fuel. But we're continuing to work through that and are excited because we'll finally unlock the second time move-up demographic, which will be all five or six target demographics that we've, we've focused on for this development. So, everything's going well. Last thing to note, we are looking at grading Division Street with putting up, obviously, safety precautions and barriers for sledders next winter. We want to keep the hill, obviously, keep everything intact over there. And then next year, we would look to put the top lift and finalize the construction of Division Street, which is what we agreed to with the village a couple of years ago.
Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Okay, so then I'm going to.
Just one more thing I just wanted to quickly point out. Staff is working internally on the next development agreements associated with this phase, phase three and four. And those will be coming to the village board prior to commencement of, of activity on, for these next phases.
Okay, then I'm going to, now can I go up on my public, okay, we're good. So I'm going to open up the public hearing for this item for anybody who'd like to address the board on this issue. Do we have any papers turned in? Do we have anybody who would be interested in addressing the board? Okay, with that, I'm going to close our public hearing at this time. Board members, questions, comments? Nyla, go ahead.
Chris, could you please point out and explain the concept for Water Tower Park? It, I mean, it's divided, the park would end up being divided, a road between. Would you explain what may be going in up there, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, we're, we're still in the design phase, so you'll see. The first priority is just getting Division Street, the new alignment for Division Street. You'll see how it kind of bends onto the Veridian or the Brining property. And, you know, we want to keep the sledding hill intact. We don't want to disturb anything to the west of, of Division. To the east, we're still working with Parks Department and figuring out what is the ultimate goal or usage, highest and best use for that park. We anticipate, you know, utilizing a trail for sure behind the tree line back there that will ultimately connect up to Capitol. That's on the dock for, I believe, two years from now, but the trail for sure. And then what gets utilized at the bottom of that hill, really Susan and the team are going to look at and we're going to work through together. And how, you know, it could be anything. I think we've talked about from a parking area for Water Tower Park and people who want to sled. And then you got to take into account, how do you get everybody across the street safely? And so there's, there's just questions that need to be kind of vetted. And that'll start with the design of, the ultimate design of, of Division Street. And then sitting down with parks and kind of utilizing what is, what is the budget and then the highest and best use for that park, so.
Can I go on?
We're still working through that as long as I guess with the final answers.
My concern, I live in that area and I've heard from the neighbors. We have a couple, many concerns. One is we don't have parking on the Berlin Street, Division Street area. Right now, that area is used by church groups. It's used by exercise groups, the top of the hill. And we're worried about adequate parking. We're als, we're als, neighbors also want to know, and I think this is up to the, you know, the streets department. But they want to know that there's going to be a four-way stop on East Berlin and North Division. And they want to be certain that there's going to be, it's going to be safe and that the park isn't going to end up getting closed because of the road going through. And I know that everyone's working toward that, but it's, we've, I've seen in the past, I can't tell you what town it was, where it was on TV that they said they did everything they could to keep their park. And after the first winter, they had to close it. In my opinion, now is the time to be looking at that because once the road goes through, the road is through. So please explain that to me.
Sure. Brian Munson with Van of All Asociates. Just to speak through the process we've been working on to date in relationship to both parks because we see this eventually becoming and functioning as one park on either side. In Water Tower Park, the reason you see the bend is for two purposes. One is to pull the road away from the sledding hill and the grades that are currently there. But then also to try to preserve as many of the trees that are right on the property line as possible as a physical barrier between the street itself and the sledding hill. So that that maintains some of that buffering. But the final design of that is really going to be taken in concert, worked closely with engineering about how the design of that street fits both the cross-section and the grade transition as we come down. So that, you know, again, it's looking at how, making sure that that Water Tower Park sledding hill component is factored into the overall grading design of both to make sure that that environment ends up with a usable sledding hill in the future and a safe street cross-section coming down the hill. The area east, again, as Chris mentioned, really the one thing that we've kind of said is an absolute now is that trail connection that goes through it, keeping the trees that are there, or majority of the trees in that slope area. But then working closely with the city to identify, well, is, does there need to be a parking lot there? Does there need to be on-street parking? Do we need to have a crosswalk to make sure that people can get back and forth safely? Those are all elements that are kind of in the hopper for discussion as we move into this kind of northwest corner of the property. And we'll work really closely with, with village staff to, to make sure that we get those resolved before we move further into it.
My concern is, is with the phase that you're looking at now, that if something is done, that once it's done, it's done. We can't, we aren't going to undo it. And I think we need plans for the park now before we approve a plan. That may not be what we want.
Yeah. From a, from a grade sense, the development of the lots are actually going to be quite a bit higher than any of the, any of the park spaces. So we recognize that there's going to be a transition on the back of the lots, but that as much as possible, we're trying to get the back of those lots back to existing grade. Because again, we're trying to work to preserve the trees that are there. So that's kind of a set point that we're working around. So the ability for the parks to the north and the lots to be developed, they kind of operate in two different realms. And that tree line is kind of that, that buffer that's going to, you know, really work to tie them all together, but also preserve the existing conditions within the park space itself.
But what about parking at the bottom or at the, on the Berlin?
Intermodal.
Area. There, there, right now, there's minimal parking there.
Yeah.
I don't know what the plans are for the future, but we, the neighborhood thinks that there needs to be additional parking there.
Yep.
Because otherwise, it's going to be frankly a mess.
Yeah. And that's why we are showing the option for a parking lot within that, the new park addition area.
But you're not, I don't think you're understanding. The new park is at the bottom of the hill. The old park is at, a lot of it's on top of the hill. The residents feel that there needs to be additional parking on top of the hill.
Yep.
Where would you get that?
I don't know. I, I, I have no idea. But I'm, I'm just bringing this up because once we, we approve this area that we're looking at now, what can we do to change it? I, I, I just see that, I don't want to go on with the project that's going to cause a problem so we are going to have issues with, down the road with the park.
Yeah.
What is, I'm curious what the problem is. That many people are parking up there now. Why can't they continue to park there where they're parking now?
Well, the reason is currently with the way the street ends, people can park up on that little area.
I would say, just a couple of things for the village board. The, the preliminary plat here is consistent with the final plat. So, this is an administrative matter that you're handling tonight. We control the street, okay? The, the developer is going to be required to construct the street based on our standards. Once the street is constructed, we will control whether or not there will be a stop sign at the intersection. Nyla, like you said, or whether or not there will be parking on the street or no parking on the street. We will also control through the Parks Commission to the extent how that park is going to get developed. And so I just want to make sure that you guys understand that the developer doesn't have input on whether or not there's going to be parking on the street, whether or not there's going to be a four-way stop there. That's all within our control that I would defer to other staff members as to when that decision needs to be made. But keep in mind that the, the plat itself, the final plat that they're coming forward with here, is consistent with the preliminary plat, which is the requirement that they have to satisfy. So, I, I appreciate, I think, Nyla, you're right in looking ahead. But to me, looking ahead for the village board on this is not necessarily for tonight's meeting because we effectively approved the location of the road when we approved the preliminary plat. And that, we did that probably two years ago.
But at that time, I asked about that and Kevin said that that was going to happen with the next phase.
Well, and, and the issues that you're raising now are going, are going to happen. And potentially, if it comes to, I don't know to what extent, the park plans are going to be part of this development agreements. I'd, I'd have to talk to Sue about that. But the issues regarding on-street parking and, and, and the four-way stop, really, with no disrespect to the developer, they don't get to play a role in that. That's your decision outside the scope of what we're doing tonight, just to let you know.
Okay, so would it be incorrect to ask that that information be put forth before we approve this?
No, because we want, we, in my opinion, it would be no. That's something that's entirely within our discretion, the village's discretion. And that's a decision that you all will make later irrespective of this particular developer.
But if the work is already done, you can't change the, the work that has been, that they're going to do. You can't change it, you know, once they put lots in up there, they're not going to change what they're doing.
I know, but those lots are consistent with the preliminary plat.
Except we did approve, what, three more?
Yeah. Well, I mean, no, no, you haven't approved that yet tonight. That's, that's part of your approval. I mean, I think, I, I would, I, I would struggle with the basis not to approve the amendment to the GDP. Because it's simple, all that's being, all that's being done here is the amendment to the GDP is not going to, is not impacting the issues that you raised, which I think are fair issues, but these are also village-related issues. They're not related to the plat itself. Because we've already approved the preliminary plat, their obligation is to come in today with a final plat that's consistent with it. Assuming that they do, we are obligated under the statutes then to approve the final plat. That's why I said it's more administrative in nature.
Okay, but, but we don't necessarily have to approve the additional three lots?
Um, well, I would, I mean, I would say, for what it's worth, the Plan Commission voted unanimously. And as I sit here today, I can't think of a reasonable basis for the village not to approve the three additional lots.
The only shift was in prop, side property lines. That was it.
Yeah, let me, let me just, let me, let me shift this down. So this is, this is the existing, this is the existing design, right? Right, Chris? Brian?
Yes.
Right? Okay. So let me just shift down to, to present the difference. Do you want to detail that which is different?
Sure. So effectively, most of the changes happened along the Berlin frontage. The road alignments have not changed. So any of the amendments are strictly within the lot line placements. And as Chris mentioned, that was really to try to rebalance the, the type of houses that were available in this next phase. Kind of something we go through on a regular basis, kind of a global rebalancing of what's available in Veridian's portfolio. And so that's a response to what the market was demanding, was to have some, some smaller lot sizes here than originally designed, but within keeping of the, maintaining the single-family focus and being front-load or street-access garages. So that's, that's the differential.
What about the residential boundary, Brian? This, this line, is that line any different?
That line has not changed. Correct. The boundary between the park and the alignment of Division Street have not changed at all.
So the new lots are in that row then? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, largely on this block right here.
And then those one, four along Division.
These here were changed. I could add just one piece in terms of procedure of how this goes forward. Approval of the plat doesn't approve the street design. There's another state that's going to come along in concert with, working with the village staff to work through all of that. And as Brian said, that's really.
That'll be part of the agreement process.
Yeah, it kicks off the process of those design pieces. So before you see a, you know, construction of a, a house going on out here, the village really has a large role to play in terms of determining what the public realm looks like, both from the Parks Commission standpoint, as well as the design and engineering of those streets. That's all part of the developer agreement. We'll go through that process in concert with, with village staff prior to, you know, really getting into those design components.
Am I correct in? Am, am I correct in understanding that once this is approved, it will not come back to the board?
The develop, the, the plat will not come back to the board. That this final plat for this phase, the development agreement will be coming back to the village board. And because they can't, no work on either of these phases would be able to commence until the village board has approved the development agreement. So here, here would be an example, I think, Nyla, and I'm, and I'm just, I'm, I'm giving the example. I'm not sure if this is what engineering wants to do. But let's say that we, you know, for one reason or another, the village board decides that on the street in between the, the parks, as, as you see them on the map, that we need to have those blinkers that, you know, to allow people to crawl across the street. Now, that's a decision that we get to make irrespective of the plat. You, you, you could approve this plat and decide two years from now to put those in. If you think it's, if you, if we have an analysis of the engineering plans such that we think it's necessary to go in, then as part of the development agreement, we would talk about the cost components of that, of how that would be paid for. But the actual placing of that safety crossing in the street is entirely our decision-making process. So I guess the other way to think about it is, yes, you would be approving the plat tonight. But as we move forward, whether it's in the next six months, the next year, or the next two years, if there are determinations made regarding the street, like either we want parking on the street or we don't want parking on the street. We want to have a certain type of crosswalk in there or we don't want to have it. We want a four-way stop at the Verlaine and Division Street intersection or we don't. Those are all decisions that you have the ability to make moving forward too. You don't necessarily have to make them right now. While I do agree with you that it does make sense to think about those things on the front end to the extent that you can.
But what I'm trying to say is that once that road goes through, there's no place to put parking up there.
Well, but we, we've essentially already made that decision when we approved the preliminary plat.
Okay, so are we changing any of the parking dynamics up at the top in the older section of town? That's currently servicing parking for Water Tower Hill. Are we changing anything with that? There's no, are we, are we changing any of the parking in that area?
Well, we're extending the road.
Other than the road, I mean, what's there right now, are we changing any parking at this time?
Well.
At this time?
It depends on how you look at it.
Technically, yes, because you look at the area with, where people usually park for the sledding hill, where we have the sign that says the road goes left. Where about four, five cars park. And if they extend the street to the east, that'll be maybe two. So it, it's a little, but the street length would neutralize it.
Parking on the ride.
Okay, so, thank you, Dan.
I'm saying the street would neutralize that, is what I'm saying.
Thank you for that part. So right now, we're not deciding that. And I understand what you're saying, Nyla, with the road. But the road, what, what Veridian has been tasked to do was, we did not want to lose that sledding hill. We wanted to keep that park. It's not their responsibility to figure out our parking on that park. It's not on their parcel. That's not, they don't own that land. It's our park. So the bottom section, that's a different story. We can talk about parking lots and things down there. But for them to be required to do parking for something that's not their land is, I think that's a stretch for us.
But there are park impact fees. That, and to some extent, can't we use parking for the park as part of how the land could be used?
And again, that park is already existing and has been there. And we tasked them with making sure we could keep that park. We didn't say, we want to keep that park and we want you to provide us parking for that other park that's not on your parcel. They have a parcel down at the base right now where they're putting another park in, which is great. Combining it as one park, eh, it's a little bit of a challenge because you've got a road in between it.
Fair.
So what our issues are going to be in the future is figuring out, how do we get people across that road safely? And how do we get additional parking potentially down there? That's what we got to figure out later down there. But getting it up at the top of the hill is going to be a challenge. We don't own any land up there. We don't have any parkland that's up there. And there's no dedicated parkland remaining unless we were to purchase a home or two next to the park to put the parking in up there. So what we're really deciding tonight all is these additional lots going into the plat. And those additional lots are just being shrunk so they can put a more affordable housing that fits the market for what they're looking at right now. That's all we're really doing tonight. We're not, we're not deciding on that road exactly where it's going to be and all that. They have to figure that out and our engineers have to figure that out. Phil?
Just an observation. A Division Street that's planned to be put in is as wide as North Division up there. And there's parking along the street up there. There's, there's a, there's going to be adequate parking next to the sledding hill.
Yeah.
Parallel parking all the way up there. I think it's kind of, kind of a gain as opposed to a loss, you know? It's true, at the top there, we might because of the road lose a parking place, but it's replaced by about a dozen going down the hill.
So I, I mean, I think we just need to keep it in our minds as we're going through to make sure that we have adequate parking. We're going to lose a little bit, as Phil just pointed out, we're going to gain some too. And I think down at the bottom of the hill, Sue and her team are going to do a great job to figure out what's going to be really appropriate for that park down there. Maybe it's a ice skating thing to go with the sledding hill. I don't know what that might be, but we can talk about that as we go. Phil, you had something?
Is East Verlaine going to be wide enough to park also as that, as it goes across? Is that going to be? So I think there'll be a net gain.
Is East Verlaine going to be as wide as?
A little wider, actually.
A little wider?
I think we'll be parking on, on East Verlaine and Division. I know it gets busy there. I'm sure it gets busy all the way down to your house, but it's really busy.
So we'll come back to parking, we'll come back to parking at a later date. But right now, we're just really focused on these four additional, or changed to the four additional lots. So Gary, do you have any other comments?
Uh, no.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't see any reason, as Brian said, that we wouldn't. Plan Commission did vote unanimously to approve this. And I'm going to make the motion to approve the GDP on second and third addition plats to Heritage Hills along with this SIP subject. To all staff comments resolved to the satisfaction of the Community Development Director and Village Engineer along with the following conditions. Do I need to read them all, Brian?
No, and I think you can remove the first one because your effect by, by approval of the amendment to the GDP is a part of what you're, what you read. I would just say along with the conditions two and three is identified in the village packet.
So moved.
I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Ayes have it. Thank you, guys. You're willing to stay for the rest of the meeting if you want. I always invite that.
Nobody ever takes you up there.
I always invite it.
They lose their car keys or something.
So long. All right, next we have licensed, under license permits, discuss and take action on Class A liquor, alcohol beverage license application for Mefort Oil Company Inc. Doing business as Mefort Oil Company. Carla, who's got this one?
Brian? I can take it. The Meforts have applied for the Class A liquor to go along with their Class A beer license like they used to have at the one-stop. And they're doing that down, so that's all they're doing.
Okay. Any, any other background other than that? So I know Adam's not here and I didn't get a chance to ask him. Did we ever have any issues with alcohol being sold in the B P that we didn't? I know they have cameras and all the different things that are necessary.
I am not aware of any, but.
I didn't get a chance to ask him either, but.
It did come from the PD as approved.
Make a motion, make a motion to approve the alcohol beverage license application for Mefort Oil Company. Doing business as Mefort Oil Company Inc. Promised that it was building located at 300 South Division Street for the licensing period, March 8th, 2022 to June 30th, 2022.
Okay, motion by Gary Hersberg, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, new business. This doesn't take action on authorization to allow Create One A Key Committee to coordinate and implement mural on retaining wall at former village library site. Todd?
So, Nyla, Carla and I succeeded at getting the packets out on Wednesday.
Did a good job.
But that meant I didn't quite have enough time to get this memo in your packet. So bear with me as I, as I explain. It relatively straightforward is the proposal here. And a member of the Create One A Key Committee, Joel Lewis, is taking on an effort to look at the cement poured wall that's along the sidewalk in front of the old library to install a mural on that portion of the wall. And I'll start by saying that he recognizes that this will certainly be a temporary installation. Someday, somewhere along the line, maybe that wall isn't going to be the best architectural element. He understands that. That's, that's appreciated and is entirely fair to call it a temporary mural. And he has reached out to community members to participate and engage in a project to put a mural on that stretch of wall. The theme that they're talking about is called Stronger Together. And the work that they want to do is engage the community to help explain what others feel stronger together means. They want to engage the youth of the school and other community members. Jessica Stortz is an art teacher at Heritage Elementary and will be involved in helping lead the project. With that, they'd also like to, with ideas from youth, even compile a book that would be contributed to the library, sharing the story of what together, stronger together means to the community. So the action tonight, and Brian can help me explain why we're proposing this, is to ask the village board to authorize the Create One A Key Committee to oversee this, this mural installation and then have, essentially have the decision-making authority on that installation and its design. Is that accurate, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, we just, as we work with the committee, and whether it was the committee or the village board, there are just things that we need to be aware of because this is village-owned property, because it is being run through a village committee. The example I would give is that the city of Verona has, has a program that they work with the, with the Verona area school district and with a nonprofit association where students are able to prepare banners that are then put up on light poles within the city of Verona. And, you know, we have, we have to make sure that we, you know, there, we don't violate anybody's First Amendment rights as we go through the process because it's sponsored by, in that case, the city, in this case, the village. We have to make sure that we maintain the separation of church and state. You know, so certain symbols can't, just like they can't go on the banners in Verona, they wouldn't be able to go on the mural here. But I think if, if you provide the authorization, as Todd stated, then staff can just work with Create One A Key as it goes through this process to make sure that the village is protected on, on both of those issues and some other, I would just say, content-based issues.
Board members, questions or comments?
Would cost of materials come from the Create One A Key fund or where do you foresee those coming from?
In speaking to Joel, they're talking to the multiple paint companies that exist in our village now for material donations. And then they'd be using volunteer, community member participation to complete the project. And Aaron's our chair of Create One A Key Committee, did I get that right?
I think so, yeah.
Thank you.
So Brian, if you can just help me with the freedom of speech, freedom, freedoms. If we give up this right or we allow this to happen, what can we have on there? What can we take off of there? Or can't we?
Well, I mean, so I, I think what we would want to have, what I would advise the committee or is, we, we want to set up a process so that we would want to know what's going to be painted before it's painted. There's obviously a wide variety of things that can, the easiest way is to describe things that we would not allow. And, you know, we still need to be the decision-maker to be, be able to say, you know, let's say somebody is going to be put something up that clearly falls within the definition of, let's say, hate speech, which is not protected by the First Amendment. Now, we need, because it's our property, we need to have the ability to say, no, that's not going to go on there. That's an obvious answer. But I, I wouldn't say that we're necessarily giving up any rights because it's our property. I would say that we will, the Create One A Key Committee will be the decision-maker as to what's going to go on there. And as we do that, we just have to make sure that we are not violating any, anybody's First Amendment rights to put something on there that is otherwise protected by, by, by speech.
So what you're saying is we have no oversight as the village board on this?
Well, if you provide the author, I mean, it, it really depends on how you want to approach this. If, if, if you, if you want to task the committee with essentially organizing the program, but then ultimately having whatever the mural is going to look like come back to the village board before it's painted, you certainly have the ability to do that as part, you know, kind of tweak the motion a little bit if you want it to come back.
So you mentioned that we could put things in there, say, this is not allowed? How do you encompass what's not allowed? There could be so many different things that, because we change
Yeah.
as a society over the years and something may become acceptable that's not acceptable now or vice versa. And I just, I just want to make sure that we as a board have controls on that.
Well, so the example-
We may not be here at that time, so there's another board that all of a sudden we've taken away their rights because we implemented.
So I, I'm not exactly sure how the process is going to use here. So let me just explain the process in Verona because I'm familiar with it because it could essentially be utilized here. For these banners that they do in Verona, just like for potentially somebody wanted to add something to the mural, there is an application process. And as part of the application process, in that, in this instance, it's students. So students and parents sign the documents. They say, this is what I would like to put on the banner. Here's why I want to do it. Here's what it would look like generally. And quite frankly, we have waivers in that application that says, you know, you get into intellectual property rights, okay? If, if you're going to create a banner or if you're going to put a mural up. So this is, let's say the mural program is successful. Now you want to put it on your website, okay? Somebody came up with the, you know, the top left corner of the mural, somebody came up with that idea. We want to make sure that we can take a picture of that mural, put it up on our website and make sure that we haven't violated their intellectual property rights. We, we, we have language in the application that says we ultimately have the authority to make the determination on the content within what's going to the mural. Now, we will exercise that in a reasonable way. Somebody's really going to have to go over the line for us to not put something on there. But I would think that you could create an application process for what's going to go into the mural, similar to the banner program in Verona that allows for the protections for the village on the front end. And then it's just going to be a question of who is, who ultimately decides what's going to go on the mural? Is it, are you going to give the authorization to the committee? Or are you going to handle it at the board level? And, and one of the reasons you approach it that way is for the reason that you said, Chris, because it's such a broad category of, you know, what can or cannot go on there. We're not, we're not going to be able to bullet point everything. We essentially need to maintain complete discretion and then, and then utilize, exercise that discretion in a responsible way.
So the way this reads in our packet, to allow Create One A Key Committee to coordinate and implement mural on retaining wall, it gives nothing of our oversight whatsoever.
So-
We haven't seen any documentation with this, so we're just, we're getting this. I'm not against this.
Yeah.
I, I'm just, I want to make sure there's some controls in it. And I don't see those yet.
Because last time they did this, they ended up painting the wall back over anyway. So I don't want to get back in that situation.
And Aaron, maybe you can, Aaron, she's chair of the committee, so.
And this is, like, the wall group is kind of like a subpart of Create One A Key. I don't know what we call them, project groups, work groups. And then we kind of paused it and said, can we have some village board approval intake before it gets too deep so that then we have support of the village? That they're going to find some answers to these questions. But we're, I guess, authorizing them to explore it further and get answers. But I think that basically like these are, this is a project for and by the children. You know, I don't want us to get too like nitty-gritty in it, but.
Okay.
Well, and so you have, for example, you have the ability to essentially authorize the Create One A Key Committee to move forward with it with the understanding that they're going to implement some processes at, at a committee level. But then, you know, theoretically, you could have, okay, we've gone through the processes. We've gotten what, what the kids want to put on the mural. Here's generally what it's going to look like to the extent, I'm not even sure if there's going to be words. It may just be pictures. And then you have the ability to say, okay, before that is actually going to be put on our property, the, the, the step before that, we want it to come to the village board just so that we can see it and authorize it. I mean, in that way, you're still allowing the committee to move forward with the project. It's, I don't, especially if it's children, I do not anticipate any issues. I can tell you that they have had minimal issues in Verona. I think in part because it's essentially students, student ideas. But if you want to do it that way, at least you ultimately maintain control of what's going to go on and when it's going to go on.
Yeah, I, I, my concern is we don't know all the signs and symbols. I mean, I don't know all the different ones that are out there today and that may be offensive to some people. And is that okay or is it not okay? And if we don't have any guidance here or for, for the committee, that, that, I just feel challenged by that. But we have the rights, just so I'm clear. At any time, we could say, because it's on our property.
Well, that's, we, we, I think we'd want to make everybody aware of that on the front ends. But yes, we do. It is, it's on our property. But yes, we do. It's on our property, and so, you know, I mean, one of the ways to think about this is it sounds like a really excellent project. I mean, it may be something that you do on an annual basis. You have a mural, the process works so well, you get so many kids involved, that you put the mural up for one year, and then you decide, okay, we're going to have a different kind of concept for the next one, and you go through it again, and then you continually have involvement on an annual basis. You know, at the end of the day, though, you may decide, hey, we're going to sell this property, in which case then the mural's going to come down. I mean, and there's other reasons why, maybe you need to reconfigure the landscaping or something on the property where the retaining wall needs to come down. There can be multiple different reasons. You ultimately maintain the authority, though I think you would just want to make everyone understand that on the front end just so there's no misunderstandings with the kids if they decide to participate in this.
Right. Okay. Other board members? I mean, I kind of talked a lot there.
Do you want to call a periodic review or what do you, what is our language for that?
I was just saying, I think it has to come in front of the village board for approval.
For final approval?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I'm all for it. I think it's a great opportunity for the kids and what they can do, but I just want to make sure that we're not getting ourselves into something.
If it's on school property, it'd be different, but if it's on our property, I think it has to come through us for approval.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, what does the motion say right now?
Well, I think as Gary suggests, it would be to authorize and allow the Create Wanakee Committee to coordinate the mural, the project for designing a mural on retaining wall at a former village library site with final approval of mural design by the village board.
That was in my exact motion.
I'm only second your exact motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Trusty Hertzberg, seconded by Trusty Random. Any other comments?
They're good with words.
Okay, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. All right. Next, we have discuss and take action on 2022 Public Works Improvement bids.
I'm recusing myself from this. It's on my street.
Okay. Who's?
Okay.
Bill.
Bill.
February, we put out bids for the Berlin Street project, which will include sidewalks on both sides. Bids came in real well. Basically, we're under budget. So, we presented to Public Works and they unanimously approved moving forward. So, we're looking for Wolf Paving to be our contractor.
I'll move to award the 2022 Fellow Works Improvement Project to Wolf Paving in the amount of $1,329,963.34.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So moved.
Seconded by Phil Olmans. My only comment is, good job getting it under bid. So, happy to see that. All right, any other comments? Call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Next, we have discuss and take action on 2022 pavement rehabilitation bids.
Pretty much the same thing there, except this one is Paint and Dolan that is getting the award. The numbers again came under budget. This also included a couple of amendments or addendums?
Alternates.
Alternates, thank you. One for Village Center Parking Lot and the other one for, Eric, Monterey?
Monterey.
Monterey. And with adding those two, we still feel we're within budgets. We'd like to move forward with these projects.
I'll make a motion to award the 2022 pavement rehabilitation project to Paint and Dolan in the amount of $882,912.75.
I'll second it.
Motion by Trusty Kaufman, seconded by Trusty Frye. Any other comments? Call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Next, we have Village Center, discuss and take action on MSA proposal to update the Village of Wanakee Town of Westport Joint Comprehensive Bicycle, Pedestrian, and Outdoor Recreation Plan.
I can take that one. Thanks, Chair Zonner. The village's comprehensive outdoor recreation plan was created in 2017 as part of the comprehensive planning effort with the town of Westport. Five years has elapsed. There are a number of state grant programs that require current plans in order to be eligible, the Knowles Nelson being one of them. So, in addition to the plan being five years old and the stipulation regarding potential grant funding eligibility, staff has reached out to MSA to update the plan, the outdoor recreation plan. The proposal includes about a five-month, or I'm sorry, a five-meeting, six-month process that would convene via a joint parks committee with the town of Westport. So, a efficiency of scale is proposed here because the proposer, MSA, is familiar with the project, familiar with our comp plan, and familiar of these individuals who worked with jurisdictions to create the first one are still there and would likely lead the charge in this one. So, there's a lot of efficiency in going with this proposal. The Parks Committee at their meeting last Wednesday recommended approval of this, and the staff is recommending approval as well. The village cost would be $9,800. The cost to the town would be the balance, I think it's $4,000. Total cost between the two jurisdictions would be $13,800. So, I don't know, so if I missed anything?
You got it.
Okay.
Board members, any comments, questions? So, I would just say, our comprehensive plan, we typically do every 10 years.
Right.
It's recommended or it's by statute?
Statutes recall for an overhaul essentially every 10 years.
So, we're roughly halfway through this? So, we're halfway through and we're going to need to do it again. Cost-wise, this is a small cost compared to what the comprehensive plan looks like, so.
The last time we did it, we had a good relationship. Moving forward, I think I'd like to recommend we move to approve the MSA proposal to update the comprehensive bicycle, pedestrian, and outdoor recreation plan for a total of $13,800, village share $9,800.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion by Phil Olmans, seconded by Natalie Frye. Any other comments? Call the question all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Heard none. And I'd also recommend, since we just talked about that, if you're interested in a committee, which we talked up earlier, Parks Committee, you can apply for the Parks Committee if you want to get onto there. Or if you're very interested in that, participate in the Parks Committee meetings. All right. Next, we have discuss and take action on building and grounds improvements at former library in support of the food pantry use.
So, in an interesting twist, I'm actually going to talk about the recommendation first. The next item on your agenda after this is to discuss a potential lease with the food pantry. Now, we're going to present details about the lease, and then we're going to be recommending to go into closed session to discuss negotiating parameters related to that lease. Related to that, if the lease is approved or we have parameters that can move that forward, there would then necessarily need to be physical changes made to the property to accommodate the new leaser. So, the recommendation, if you're comfortable with this, would be to, upon, essentially suggest that upon execution of a lease between the parties, the village administrator would be authorized to proceed with construction, design, planning related to the things we're going to discuss now. So, that's how that cart-horse thing is arranged for tonight's meeting. The village board did authorize staff and the village attorney to initiate further discussion with the food pantry to lease the entirety of the lower level of the former library. The food pantry remains interested in that, and in the memo on page 86 are the physical elements to the building that we're suggesting would need to be addressed to make that available. Available and ready to go for their use. Essentially, we're creating a white box for them, essentially in an unimproved, open area that they can then do whatever they care to with, the floor, the ceilings, the lights, and the walls. The things that we're addressing are physical infrastructure elements necessary for it to be leasable for their use. That includes issues like upgrading the bathrooms. If you've been in the lower level of the former library, you know that we have down there the child version of toilets. So, anyway, there are, and that's probably the majority of the $35,000 to $42,000 cost would be those plumbing improvements in the lower level. The other thing that we would need to do is physically establish a separation between the lower level and what will be some future use of the upper level. So, if you recall, on the north side of the building wall, there's an open stairway that goes up to down. We would need to separate that with a doorway, a lockable doorway, and we would also need to upgrade the elevators so it has lockout controls to not go up and down. The, in addition, we'd be looking at replacing, repaving and installing a sidewalk from the sidewalk along South Street and making those repairs to prep the site for the user. The entire building's HVAC system is past its life expectancy. So, we do have a proposal, a quote on replacement for the entirety of the HVAC system. The notion of going in and ripping out a couple pieces just to serve the lower level and not address the upper level HVAC doesn't necessarily make sense. So, we're suggesting a full HVAC replacement to address the entirety of the building. The only other item is contingency and items related to elevator upgrades. Bill, I don't think we got that quote yet, did we, from the elevator company?
Not yet.
Okay. But I would assume $10,000 would be sufficient to cover those control updates?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this gives you an estimate total improvement of about $170,000. The recommendation would be the use of the American Recovery Funds, our ARPA funds, to support this installation, these improvements as it relates to an organization doing things for the neediest of our population. Right now, the village has spent $335,000 of our total allocation, which was $1.4 million. So, our current balance without this expenditure is $1,135,000. So, that would bring us back to the recommendation, then, that contingent upon the lease agreement between the village and food pantry being executed for authorization of the village administrator to proceed with construction, design, and planning for the lower level of the former library and to solicit bids for construction and renovation for further action by the village board as required. That's a mouthful.
Okay. Board members, questions for Todd? Gary?
I make a motion to move the execution of the lease agreement between the Village of Wanakee and the food pantry. And the village administrator shall have the authors authorized to proceed with construction, design, and planning for the lower level of the former library and solicit bids for construction and renovation for further action by the village board as required.
I'll second.
Motion by Garrett, first seconded by Sam Kaufman. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I'm pleased that we were able to accomplish this. And I'm hoping after we go and see what the lease agreements and everything are, that we can come to an agreement because I think it's just something that we absolutely need here in the community. And the food pantry's been growing, and they need the space, and it's something for all of our residents potentially, so. I'm glad we could do this. Okay. Item six, discuss and take action on, should we do six first or seven first, or what should we do here?
So, I am definitely prepared to discuss part of six in open session. And then, you know, there are certain things that we're going to want to discuss in closed session. It would be my recommendation, but there's certainly an open session discussion for six that we can do. I'd have to defer to Todd and Tim as to whether or not there's also going to be an open session component of number seven. If there are going to be for both of them, my suggestion is let's do six in open session. Let's do seven in open session. And then, I don't know about eight and nine, but if eight and nine is all closed session, then we would double back to six and essentially we would take votes on six, seven, eight, and nine and ultimately go into closed session.
So, eight is removed, correct, Todd?
Correct.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Okay. So, why don't we do that, then? So, Todd and Tim, do you anticipate seven having some in open session?
Yes.
Okay, so if everybody's okay with that, we'll do six and seven in open session. And if we are going to need to go into closed session, we'll do that at that time. Sound good, everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, within your packet, I think it starts on about page 95, maybe 94, is a draft lease agreement between the village and the food pantry. As you'll see, there are some blanks in there. We have gotten some feedback from the food pantry. I would, this is similar to a lease that we started working on, oh, probably about two or three, two years ago, I think, for a daycare center, which was then based off of, you know, kind of, I would call more standard, you know, leases that municipalities will have for buildings that they own where they're renting a portion of the property. The food pantry has given us some valuable information that we're going to be able to insert regarding operations and different rules and regulations that they are bound by, whether they're state or federal, because of the operations that they have. So, we'll be able to insert that. I do think, one thing to note, and I think this is a reasonable request by the food pantry, going back to the last item that Todd discussed with you, there is an understanding that there's going to have to be some work done on the facility before they would be able to move in. Their request is that they want to see that work done before the lease would commence. That seems reasonable. I don't necessarily want the village to be bound by a certain time to be completed with this work. As we're all aware, there have been supply chain and other related issues all across the country. And so, I do think it makes sense for the work to be done before the lease starts. But it may be that we need a little bit of flexibility in working with the food pantry on what that exact date is going to be because of things that are outside of our control.
Although not held to it, I did contact the parties involved in assisting us with the contract work. And three to four months is the expected turnaround from go, basically.
Okay. One of the things, so the way that the lease is drafted right now is that it would be a 15-year term. I have not heard, we did not get feedback from the food pantry that suggests that they have a concern with that. So, if, ultimately, if the board is okay with a 15-year term. You know, the way these are, the way these work, there is going to be language for both parties. Both parties would have the ability to terminate the lease without cause upon one year's written notice. That seemed to work for them, and it works in their favor also. They would be able to terminate the lease with one year's notice if they wanted to. We are going to have to talk a little bit about rents to see exactly what the expectations are going to be. There's a lot of language in this agreement regarding utilities. We're trying to come up with a reasonable way to project what the utilities are going to be since it's vacant right now. It seems like the comments that we've received from the food pantry is, they just want to come up with something fair. I think that's what we want to come up with, too. We also need a little bit of flexibility because we don't know exactly how the upper level is going to be used. And we also want to be able to retain the ability to lease out that upper level if a party comes to us and it makes sense. And so, I think on the utility issue, we're ultimately going to have to have some flexibility in the documents. They, I'm just trying to run through here. They, again, like I mentioned, they did provide some valuable information for us that we'll be able to insert into the lease regarding their operations, their employees, and things of that nature. Obviously, it's very clear that their employees are their employees. They are not our employees. And we have language within the document to address that. One thing that we're going to have to work through is parking, and I think there is language in the document. We are going to have to work with the school district, too. I think when, as we went through that process before regarding the MOU with the school district, you know, now based on that MOU, we're not moving the village hall there. The parking area that I think is on the upper level is going to revert back to the school district. And so, we're going to, you know, my understanding is the school district has indicated a willingness to work on a parking lease with us regarding the use of the former library site, and particularly if the food pantry is going to be there. But everybody is, you know, we understand, I think the food pantry understands that we need to work out that leasing issue regarding the parking area with the school district, too, before we can move forward because this isn't going to work if we only have the lower level parking area. There's a lot of then what I would call kind of boilerplate standard language in the documents. And I think I've kind of talked about the issues that I'm comfortable talking in open session now. The remaining issues, I think, really kind of get into issues like rent. How are we going to work out the parking, different terms and conditions that I think would be best to discuss in closed session. But I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you might have, and I'll-
Any questions related to what Brian was just discussing, outside of rent? Negotiation. Okay. Then let's move on to number seven, and then Todd.
All right. This past January, as a recall, 100- This past January, as a recall, 100 Baker Street LLC was granted approval of a conditional use permit to operate a boutique hotel in the building at 100 Baker Street that was subject to several conditions, excuse me, one of them being state approval. Upon evaluation of the plans by the state plan reviewer, it was determined that sprinklers were needed due to the change in use. That cost for sprinklers was not calculated in the applicant's original cost estimate for their project and so they are now coming before the village requesting TIF funds to help close, close that cost. The applicant is here this evening and is available to make a presentation to summarize their project. So David and Brett are here and we can, we can have a conversation after that. There may be a need to go into closed session about the specific dollar amount, but staff is looking for direction after their, after their presentation.
Next, Tim. Yep, David, Brett from 100 Baker Street LLC, actually our wives are here to support us as well. Very much a part of this project. But yeah, the highlight of it is, you know, the main part is changing that upstairs into a hotel use. There'll be six rooms. It is a minimal build out because it's currently built out for the previous owner who was going to live up there. So to build off that, you know, we were drawn to this building for its character and the location. I'm sure everyone in this room knows that building. It is actually the oldest standing building in Wanake and we just love that character. We knew we could do something with that, so we're bringing in, we want to bring in an upscale boutique hotel. A lot of the conversation will be around that, but simultaneous to that, we're also exploring new tenant options for that first floor to coincide with that hotel usage and then also my fishing business will go down in that lower level, which is currently unused retail space. But we want it to be a success for the village and without the TIF money or assistance, as Tim said, we just, we can't get there. We can get into the timelines of how that all came down if you want the details there, but we were likely, we weren't going to need the elevator or the sprinkler system initially as we got into more details and more code analysis. We do need it and we're happy to bring in those fire protections. Currently, there's no fire protection in that building, so I think it will be an update for that building and the village as well. But along with that comes, comes an extended cost. So I'll let Brett talk about a little bit more of the cost that's entailed.
Thank you for having us tonight. As David mentioned, we've been kind of working on this for nine months now, so, and we're kind of getting to the end where we're starting to talk to contractors about continuing on with the construction piece. So that's where we ran into this and so we're here tonight to ask for the TIF assistance and that would be directly invested into the fire protection, new water supply, it needs a six-inch main coming into the building and the associated plumbing with that. So the request is for 209,000 and it would be a pay-as-you-go structured. We've had a conversation with Fortify Bank out of the village of Wanake here, so a local private lender that we're using and they would be able to monetize that agreement for us, so the funds would be available upfront and then the interest due on that would be the responsibility of us. And then this agreement would allow us to go forward with our HJ Pertzform Plumbing and Fire Protection quote that we have received and that was for about 190,000 dollars and then we added about 10% for the fluctuation in costs that they said could occur. In our proposal on pages eight and nine, I'm not exactly sure the pages, it would be in your documents, but it's the two spreadsheets that the village assessor gave us a low-end future assessed value that we used and then a high end of his estimate and he stated to Todd and Tim in our meetings that he was going to be conservative with that number and we do believe that our construction will exceed that in future assessed value. So using his high-end estimate of 1.06 million, we'll be adding about 12,500 dollars a year in tax increment and that would pay back the total amount that's being requested with about six years remaining in that TIF district, so well before it closes or is intended to close. And then, so our future assessment, using our construction bids that we have currently would bring the value of the building to 1.146 million, closing that gap by about two years prior to the current estimates from the village assessor. So that's the adjust of the numbers for how quickly that we believe that the tax increment would bring the dollars back to the village. And obviously, as David said, we strongly believe that there's a lot of mutual benefits that would occur with the project. We've talked to plan commission members about there not being accommodation options for a family coming to town. There's nothing in the downtown area and we think it's a good use of an existing building that is a bit of a fire hazard as it stands currently, so we'd be improving on that as well for the safety of the fire department.
Before going into discussion, should we answer the questions from the?
Sure.
Okay. So just obviously that's about maintenance, I had a couple there, maintenance, check-in style and just overall cleaning of the hotel. So yes, it would be more of an Airbnb style. We're calling it kind of a hybrid style. You will have the option to check in and get a room on-site, there'll be an office there. Whether at least staffed or not, most likely not, although with my business being in the basement, we will be there at least every other day, so there will be people on-site. We'll have emergency contacts as well, no different than like if you're renting an apartment and something goes wrong. Actually, doing a lot of travel recently, hotels are trending this way as well where it's keyless, you don't even talk to the front desk anymore, you check in on your phone, you walk up and you go into your room. So the market is trending this way and that's, that was the driver of us wanting to put this in anyway as people are traveling now again and this is the kind of style that we're finding people want. Any other questions? I didn't answer there.
Thank you, Godwin.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for the questions.
Okay.
So before we. Yeah, any other questions?
I have a question. Have all avenues been explored to find funding for this project other than through TIF? What were your findings?
Yeah, so we've been working with Fortify since about early November on the purchase of the property and the pro forma that we presented to them kind of maxed out our construction budget, which our current construction budget is 197,000 for the upstairs and that was kind of the max that they were willing to go for us on the project. So then when this came up after the architects had presented to us that we did not need it, the, or it came up after our January meeting that we would be needing the additional sprinklers and then we went back to Fortify and they said that they just won't be able to go any further for us, so.
So is there, do you know if there's any funding available any other way for sprinkler systems?
There is a, there is only a tax incentive, but there is no federal funding for it. So there is a, if you put them in an existing building, it is fully tax deductible in the year that you install them, but it's not a way to fund them upfront. So there is no funding option federally at least or from the state.
Okay, thank you.
One thing to add to the Fortify is ultimately, through Fortify, we're getting funded through the SBA, which they're part of this, all this financing and they're checking off on everything and that's kind of where everyone's drawing the line at for us.
So WBD, the Wisconsin Business Development, helps new businesses and current businesses with purchasing a commercial real estate. And so because of his business that he currently owns and has been in business for five years and our new business would be occupying more than 51% that would qualify as for an SBA loan. So that's what Fortify has been helping us accomplish and that's why they're like a little bit more strict on the maximum loan amounts that they will allow there.
Thank you.
Board members, other questions?
I have just two. So you mentioned, just because of what you guys were talking about, you were led to believe that you had, you were not going to need sprinklers. What led you to believe you were not going to?
Yeah, I can go through the timeline of that briefly. So we were interested in the building and we actually put in our letter to purchase the building, a conditional use contingency, right? And then there was a few others in there. One was working with the tenants to get an agreement set up there. That kind of lagged out a little bit longer than we were hoping to. In that timeline though, we did establish a meeting with Tim and Todd to start that, what is this going to look like for TIF funding? And we also had the approval meeting with the board here and the board recommended us to get an architect on board to figure out if we're going to need that sprinkler system. So we did, through their code analysis, through, you probably know the codes more than I do, but they, based on the construction of the building, the amount of the build out of the project and all these other parameters, it was led to believe that we weren't going to need the full sprinkler system. So we went ahead and that's not the reason.
So who led you to believe that?
Sketchworks Architects out of Middleton. So that's who, yeah, so that.
Yeah. So that wasn't the sole reason we purchased the building, but in those timelines then the seller kind of pushed us to get this thing done, so we waived those contingencies with that comfort of like, okay, we, we're pretty certain we don't need these, we'll get this. We were in, we hadn't a previous approval from the board. So we were thinking we was going to get done and then the fire chief and conversation with him and the building inspectors in town, we came to the conclusion that we'll need sprinklers. So we want to put in those fire, those fire safety parameters, it's just, that's where we are now.
Yeah, so the first presentation that we did for the plan commission was in October and that was just a conceptual review and they liked the idea and just suggested that we get an architect on board. So that's when we did that. And then to touch on the square footage piece, it was because we were only changing less than 3,000 square feet upstairs, the architects were under the belief that we did not need sprinklers because like even though there was a change of use, they thought that the, or that it being under 3,000 square feet of the change of space, that it would not kick in that change of use requiring the sprinklers. And unfortunately, the state said that that's not the case, so.
At that, that's when we stopped pushing forward with the TIF financing, at that time to see if it was an option before we could purchase in the building, but we were just confident we didn't need them.
Okay. So where would the fire inspector normally come in on that? Because I know they're very upset about the process right now. Would that have been when they met with you guys or, I mean, I'm not, they're like, what, how did this happen? The fire, at the fire department?
Well, just to keep in mind, the, the plan commission did issue a conditional use permit for the hotel use, but one of the conditions, there are multiple conditions within the CUP and one of them is that all state and federal rules and regulations need to be satisfied and I think sprinkler systems and elevators were called out within that. So notwithstanding the fact that the CUP was issued, it was clear that one of the conditions were that it wasn't going to happen unless they checked all those boxes. So I'm not sure where the local fire has come into play, but I believe that the state has now told them that they have to.
I can talk to them a little bit. We had a Zoom call with the fire inspector, Brian Adler, and our architects were there as well and they were discussing the existing building code compared to the, just the international building code and that's where the conversation between Sketchworks and the fire inspector, they came to the conclusion that they would not be needed. And then we came to our CUP meeting and it was about a couple days after the CUP meeting that the village building inspector got involved and said that because of the change in use that they will be required.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure like, so it doesn't happen to somebody else?
Yeah, I understand, yeah. Yeah, it was definitely a miscommunication somewhere there in December about or probably early January.
It's just a confusing thing as well, right? Like there's open to interpretation, some of those codes on which ones you follow and if you're here, then you go here and if you're here, then you go here. So it's, it's, it's not a cut and dry, this is it, that, and then that old construction also comes into play there too because now you're following a whole nother set of codes that have to overlay these codes and it's, it's a lot of work.
Is Milhouse quotes planning on staying in the building?
We, we hope so. We've offered, since October during the process of purchasing the building, we've been in conversation with them about trying to get a new lease signed and we've offered them the first floor and building out a portion of the basement for them, only taking away a couple hundred square feet of their space in total. And if they still, I guess, we've heard from the village as well that they have been searching for a new space for about three years, so we haven't gotten a lot of great communication on if they intend to stay or not, but we are giving them that option if they, and we hope they do, but.
They're currently on a month-to-month.
Yeah, they have been for about 18 months, they've been on month-to-month.
So with your question, as we went through plan, there was a lot of fire talk as we were going through that, you guys were there. And yes, the fire chief was very, this is, we got to have a system and it's difficult for them to get a truck where they need to, to get fire if there's a fire, how are they going to, how are they going to be there to help people? So of course, that was a challenge, but then we were operating under guidelines that you guys were led to believe, I want to show you the right word, was, was what it was and we asked to make sure that we were following all state and federal and that's where this really comes back. And it's an unfortunate situation because of, really your architects were the ones that were in this and, you know, I'm, as we go into closed session, I'll say that I brought up TIF in that meeting. The thing about TIF is I'm looking at for the general public and if we're going to use TIF from where I stand, it needs to be for the general public, not one specific. That's going to be a challenge for me, just as we go into closed session to talk about this. If, because I know that our system underground right now is old in that section of town, pressure's not great, so if we were going to upgrade to make sure that we were getting all that area down there, I could see a little more support. That probably is going to be more expensive than what we're talking, obviously, but I could see where maybe we could pull it in that way. But I'll, I'll be challenged, I'm letting you guys know as we go into talk about this.
No, we could, we have had some look into the water main there. The six inch does come halfway into the parking lot on the 100 Baker Street, so we wouldn't be disturbing the street and anything surrounding it, it would just be our own property.
To touch on the fire aspect again, not to get too fire related, but I'm a firefighter as well, it's my full-time job and the fire chief and inspector stated that they would not be comfortable sending anybody into this building in the event of a fire. So just from my perspective, I mean, to not, like if we don't do anything and if we don't get TIF, then there is no change of use, so there, there wouldn't be any updates to fire protection system, so it would still be, in his words, it's 150-year-old dried wood that would go up in flames very quickly and that would still be the case, it is the case currently. So our change of use fortunately and then kind of unfortunately is what is bringing about this request because without it, it would stay as it is and we continue to be a hazard, I guess, in your eyes.
Okay. Any other comments then? Okay, so then we are at the point where.
So then I think what you're doing is you're, you're going through the lengthy process of reading the different closed session bases for going to closed session for six, seven and nine. I would, I would read six, have a vote, then read eight, have a vote, or seven vote and then nine vote.
Okay. For number six. The village board may convene in closed sessions authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. So I'd look for a motion?
Yeah, and this one's on the food pantry.
This is on the food pantry.
I'll move that village board convene in closed session on item six.
A second.
Motion by Sam, I think Aaron beat you a little bit. So I'm going to give it to Aaron on that one and this is a roll call vote.
Okay. Gary Hirsberg?
Yes.
Sam Kaufman?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Rannum?
Yes.
Phil Willem?
Yes.
And Nyla Fry.
Yes.
Okay, then on to number seven, which is the item we were just discussing. The village board may convene in closed sessions authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. Should I look for a motion on that?
So moved.
Motion by Gary Hirsberg, second by Nyla Fry. Any other comments? Roll call vote please.
Gary Hirsberg?
Yes.
Sam Kaufman?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Rannum?
Yes.
Phil Willem?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Next is discuss and take act, oops, sorry, that one's removed. Next is discuss and take action on administrator review, compensation and benefit adjustments. The village board may convene in closed sessions authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851C for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. The village board may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. Do I have a motion? Motion by Aaron, second by Dr. Rannum. Roll call vote please.
Gary Hirsberg?
Yes.
Sam Kaufman?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Rannum?
Yes.
Phil Willem?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.